Tell order.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Doctor.
Yes, Mr. Lianthorne.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
This is Sullivan's.
Yes.
Yes.
Have a moment of silence. Thank you. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doctor Fox, are there any agenda changes or additions?
No, sir.
Thank you. And do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes for June.
Nope.
Sorry.
The agenda.
Oh, sorry. Make a motion that we approve the agenda as given this evening.
Thank you. I have a motion from Jack. The second.
Okay.
From Doctor Painter. Thank you.
Doctor Painter.
Others, can we have discussion first?
About the agenda?
Yep.
Yeah.
So. Masks has been something we've been talking about for a while. And today we got an order from the governor. And I think it's important for us somewhere to allow the public to know what's been looked at. I can handle that in my comments at the end. From my perspective, or we can do it. It's somewhere on here. We can address that.
Yeah, I send my opening of school information. I put an update in there related to the order that came through this afternoon.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hey, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Need a motion to certify matters. We're discussing closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to certify that in closed session, we discuss pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.23711A1 pertaining to the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for school board employment, appointments, transfers, resignations, appointees, or employees of the school board for personnel in instructional, custodial, nutritional, maintenance, coaches, substitutes, and contracted services.
I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
You, Mr. Lansbury. We have matters discussed in closed session. I need a motion for. Oh, I'm sorry. You gotta get the.
Mr. Lansberry.
Sorry. Yes.
Mr. Gubler.
Yes.
Is Sullivan's here?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Doctor Painter?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes. Sorry. Now we move on to. Approval of matters discussed in closed session. Someone for our motion.
I make a motion that we approve the matters discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Doctor Painter. Second. Thank you, Mr. Gubler. Oh, yes. You need to read the. Second part with the yellow.
With the yellow.
I make a motion that we approve the matters discussed in closed section, including personnel and instructional, custodial, nutritional services, maintenance, coaches, substitutes, and contracted services.
Thank you, Doctor Painter. And. Yes. Yep. And draw with Mr. Gubler as the second. The change, the changes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Sullivan's here.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we move on to the citizen comment period. Okay. All right, so I'll read this statement. Page County Public School Board welcomes citizen comment during regular school board meetings. The school board members do not respond to public comment during a meeting. All comments should be, should address a matter related to Page County Public Schools. The school board will not hear public comment that involves an individual student-related matter. The disclosure, the disclosure of which would violate acceptable confidentiality requirements. The school board accepts that the speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students, how one can respectfully agree or disagree with others' views. Speakers will address their comments to the school board and not to one individual member, nor to the superintendent, or a staff member, or the audience. Speakers will have three minutes to speak, to present their comments from the podium. Who's up first? Do we have a list? Can we go over?
Thomas Anisa.
Hannah.
Good evening. Came here to.
Please state your name and your address.
Yep. Josh Turner, 698 Crooked Run Road, Shenandoah, Virginia. I came tonight as a concerned parent, very concerned. As to what we're doing, no, not what we're doing, what's being done to our children. We teach them to love. We teach them to, to smile, to show emotion, to brighten somebody's day, and we're taking that ability away. Each and every day, that ability's taken away. The ability to pick somebody else up. Furthermore, so many more things. I've got an eight-year-old and I've got a 14-year-old that loves school, love school. They don't anymore. They hate school. They hate to get up and they hate to go. One, because she feels masked. She feels like she can't express herself. She gets tired of it, just as we have, but you can imagine being eight years old. I have a 14-year-old that struggles drastically with asthma, but has a doctor that's not willing to step up and write a note that justifies her not having that on. So I stand here and I wonder, what are we doing to them? Their minds. You know, as parents, as adults, as leaders, we're supposed to teach these kids that we're here for them. Teach them to be strong. Teach them that we've got their back. But yet we're masking them and telling them to be scared to death of a disease that's floating around in the air. I take nothing away from COVID. I take nothing away. I don't call it a fake disease. It is a real disease with minimal effect on a child, minimal effect. But at the same time, what are we doing to them mentally? To tell them they're supposed to walk around through life scared to death, petrified. Petrified. But yet we continue to come up with these orders, continue to come up with these orders and put them into place. I'm not saying that anybody in here can strike a pin and that you can say, "We're not doing that." I know what the governor said. I'm saying it's the job of this school board. It's the job of these parents. It's the job of me to stand up for my child, to say something back. Do we give any pushback to it, or we just subject to it? We've seen through history what happens with things like that when we just give into things. So many orders coming down the pike. I don't know what I was on the agenda for here tonight. But, but I look at these other policies, whether it would be for our restrooms. And I think, what are we doing there? What are we doing there creating? What makes somebody else feel better, but then taking away from my child, now that's got the threat to go in a restroom and see things, see parts that they're not to see? Whether it would be in the locker room, be in the restroom, where's her safe spot at? Where does she go when she doesn't want to be around that? I judge no one for their choice of lifestyle. I'm a Christian. God tells me to love everybody, and that's what I do, but also raise my children to be Christians. We're not talking.
Mr. Turner, three minutes.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Dan Ellis. That's 200 Starview Lane in Rileyville. It's nice to see everybody tonight. I came a few, couple meetings ago, and I spoke about the model policy. And I talked about it as a rec that was on the horizon and encouraged pumping the brakes to avoid the rec. And we do know this policy seems to violate many laws about parental rights and infringes on religious exercise, violates privacy rights and all these things. So I still do think it's a rec. I did notice that you guys added it to your legal references, and I believe that's because of a school board association recommendation to just add the model policy into the legal references. And so really what I want to ask you tonight is, I know you can't respond to me right now, but is how will that affect us to add that into the legal references? In a difference, in addition to being a parent, I'm also a pastor, so I get to talk to a lot of students. And I have dealt with students that tell me they fall under this umbrella of transgendered. Some of them, I really believe, have gender dysphoria or some intersex issue. A vast majority of them, I do not believe have those issues. I believe they have got on the internet and they have become indoctrinated by radical doctrine that has warped their thinking. And I believe if it's left to go unchallenged, or if we in some way promote it, that it will hurt them. I have children. I'm sure you have children and grandchildren. We don't want them to be hurt. So that's all I have to say. We appreciate you guys. We've been praying for you, and we love you. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Evening. Please state your name and your address.
It's Pam Lawson. 2656 Fleeburger Road, Shenandoah, Virginia, 22849. First, I want to drop this petition off for the parents out there. It was 1,385 signatures that opposed a transgender policy. So I don't know where you guys would want this.
He just said it.
Okay. So I actually was coming today to speak about masks, and then I read the agenda. So I just want to make this clear for my child. I just want you all to know that my child will not participate and will not comply. If Michael wants to be Michelle, and that's what he identifies as, my daughter's not complying. If they want to be Robert, be a horse called Mr. Ed, my daughter's not complying. Megan will not be allowed to participate in any curriculum that has to do with transgender, homosexuality, or any of the 526 genders that are so popular in this woke world, as these are matters that her father and I, as parents, will discuss with her. Male and female are okay. Science and biology is fine. She also will not participate in any critical race curriculum. We teach her to not see color and to love everyone. She will not participate in that racist agenda. The Constitution of Virginia ensures that my fundamental right as a parent to raise my child in accordance to my belief. This don't get erased because Governor Northam or the Board of Education wants to fulfill their crazy town agenda. Nobody has authority over me and my child but Jesus Christ, and this will not happen to her. So it's on the record. She's not participating.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Good evening. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Renee Bryant, 268 Covetich Lane, Stanley, Virginia. Thank you guys for having us this evening. I'm going to start with something that you're already very well aware of. So we have disruptive students that bounce from the office to the classroom all day long on a regular basis. We have teachers resigning in the middle of the year because they have disruptive students.
Could you please speak up?
Yes, absolutely. We have. Sorry. We have teachers resigning because they're overwhelmed. We have teachers resigning in the middle of the school years because of disruptive students that bounce from the office to the classroom, disrupting the teacher and the class. And you're probably wondering where I'm trying to get at with this. Now we're going to implement and enforce masks five days a week. We didn't have five days a week last year, might I add. I'm very grateful for that. I'm glad that the children will be able to mingle with each other. Now you've, how, how do you expect a teacher to enforce a group of children switching in between classes to maintain that they keep their mask up? It's absolutely impossible. It's, it's an impossible thing to place upon somebody's shoulders. That's all I have to say regarding the mask topic. It is what it is as far as what the governor has ruled on. I just think that you need to be very careful about the freedom of choice and what more you're dumping on your teachers to try to make that. It's an impossibility to regulate every single student's actions. As far as the transgender topic goes, I think that that obviously has to be handled very delicately. I think that sexuality is a very personal thing. I think that that needs to be handled with mental health professionals. I encourage you all to research gender dysphoria. I would also encourage you all to research about the frontal lobe and the development. And I think that before we enable or encourage things like that, we really need to understand the emotional and mental development before, this is a huge stepping stone. And I think that we do need to have protection of everyone, and we absolutely, everybody deserves to be protected 100%. However, we need to be very, very careful about what we implement with our young children as far as gender dysphoria. Read about it. It usually resolves itself with it between the ages of 10 to 13 years old. And last but not least, more, more so I'm here, I do not envy any of you all in your position, but I do not feel sorry for you because I believe that everything and everyone is where they are for a purpose and for a reason, and you are all meant to be sitting where you are right now. We are coming at you to ask you to make some very difficult decisions, decisions that quite frankly have major financial consequences. Each and every one of you are going to have to individually choose where's your line in the sand. Your community, your majority, your majority. You know where they stand, and you know what they want. And we cannot base everything on a financial. We just cannot.
Your time is up.
I challenge you all to think about the majority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Hello.
Hi, good afternoon.
Please state your name and your address.
Amelia King, 7 Deerfield Drive, Laray, Virginia. All right. I would like to take this opportunity to share with you what I know about masks. When a person wears a mask, it protects them. The person wearing the mask is protected. The point of an individual wearing a mask is that the individual benefits from the device. The CDC proposed to the nation that a person must wear a mask to protect, protect others. But this is absolutely false. Everyone in healthcare knows this, and I have worked safely in people's mouths as a dental hygienist every day during your shutdown, and I am healthy. In an individual, if an individual feels the need, they should absolutely have the choice to wear a mask. But to force anyone to do so is an absolute injustice. It is not science-based, but pure fear, and fear is creating chaos. Let's please take a break for a minute and respond appropriately with research-based, tried-and-true science. It's what healthcare workers do every day. If you continue to subject others to an unfounded mandate, you are also responsible for the outcome. Already, children and adults alike are being bullied, threatened, and punished for practicing their birthright of personal freedom. We are looked at with disdain and verbally assaulted. Since when is this behavior okay? If we don't comply like good little soldiers, like a herd of sheep, what? How far does this go? Are you allowed to keep my children from an education? Are you allowed to pick and choose who is favored, who is right, or who is wrong? This institution is not going to bully me, and it's not going to bully my children. I sat down trying to figure out how I was going to say all the things, all the points I wanted you to hear in the time allotted, but then I realized a lot of it is pretty redundant, but here they are. I will not respect mask mandates. I don't want pedophiles to have open access to my young daughter when she is the most vulnerable. I don't want schools to dumb down math, and I don't want people teaching hate when we should use our power to be a positive force instead of driving a wedge between coworkers, children, neighbors, and churches. But what this really comes down to every single time right here is whether or not you, our elected officials, are going to represent us, Page County, or simply follow the flock. And growing up here, of all places, I'd be willing to bet you know just how dumb sheep are. It takes education, courage, strength, and stamina, and a mind that is not willing to be corralled to make a difference in this world that is constantly humming, constantly persuading, and downright assaulting you to be a certain way, think a certain way, choose whatever it is that everyone else wants you to choose, to go along with the sheep. Be the follower. It doesn't take a bit of energy, a bit of brains, or a bit of strength. Just give in to whatever, whenever. It is very easy to be complacent. No, we actually don't have time for any of this. The weak have no place here. Under this roof, we choose you because we felt you have the strength, stamina, and yes, the brains to carry out our wishes for our children. And we are here to remind you that the paper is to be paid. Regardless of state or federal suggestions, and that's what it is, your obligation remains to this county.
Cut the camera.
I make a motion that we go back into open session.
Make a motion to go back into session.
Wait, I have a motion from Dr. Painter, second from Mrs. Smoot. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Then we're out. Okay, never mind.
Okay, the aye happened.
Take my last two.
Good evening. Please state your name and your address.
Betty Cabbage, 649 Judy Lane, Stanley.
Go ahead, Ms. Cabbage.
Okay, I'm speaking on behalf of all the children of Page County Schools, and I don't think that anyone should push stuff off on them and all. I don't think they should wear masks because children are prone to diseases anyway, and they can fight things off. And I know that it's done been mandated about wearing masks, but I think people need to try and fight back as possibly as they can because I don't think God intended for nobody to put a mask over their face unless they're going into a hospital where it's really diseased and all. I know that COVID is bad or whatever, but I think these children should have a chance to show their face and not be hid behind a mask. And other things about this here, other stuff that's going around in schools that shouldn't even be made to happen to the little children, shouldn't be taught things like that. They should be taught to learn the way it was always been taught about schools and not put things in books that shouldn't be taught. God don't intend for little children to suffer, and that's the way it should be. I don't know any of you all in here. I don't know, but I just want to speak from my heart the way I feel for children. I think children are the ones that's suffering. They are the very ones that's paying for parents' mistakes and people, and they shouldn't have to pay. They're dear to our hearts, and I just don't... I feel for them, and I pray for them, and I pray for Page County Public Schools that they make the right choice and the right decision about these children. And they shouldn't have to go through all this. And they should be able to have their freedom in school to learn and to feel the way they should feel and not to hide behind something. They're not spreading no disease. They can't spread it. And even if they get it, they don't even... And they shouldn't have to pay for all this. Children are children, and they should be children, not what other people tell them to be. They should be... Parents should teach them, and then it should be the school teach them in the right way and not ways that would hurt their little minds and destroy their minds. All this stuff that's coming out now is not right, and it's just not. And I just actually believe that these children, they shouldn't have to be. They shouldn't have to be subject to all this stuff and all and not be masked up all the time. It shouldn't be. I mean...
Ms. Cabbage, that ends your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cabbage.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Ellis, and I live at 200 Starview Lane, Rileyville, Virginia.
Speak up, please.
Okay, Lindsay Ellis, 200 Starview Lane, Rileyville, Virginia.
Okay, the mic is just for you two, so you need to speak up so we can hear.
Oh, got it. Sorry about that. I'm so sorry. The biggest thing I just wanted to address tonight, I think as a parent, looking even at the agenda tonight was kind of disappointing and hard because I think I have three children at home, and I've been listening from home, and my husband's been a couple times. And I think just the reality of parents have been crying for transparency and wanting to be a part of helping make a solution and not trying to nix one side or the other, but just really wanting to be a part of it with you guys and as a community. And I think looking at the policy updates that were posted was really hard because it referenced the exact policy that people are struggling with. And it actually referenced it 17 times. And so I think as a parent, trying to understand jargon, understand everything that's going on, which I know it's confusing for everyone, it was hard to see that and go, does that mean it's being pushed through? Does that mean it's just being referenced? What does that mean? And it just seemed hurtful when people had been asking to wanting to be a part of the solution with everyone. And so I guess my question to you guys off of that would be, what does that mean that it's being referenced? Does that mean in future it could be enacted? Or, I know there's probably more of a legal question as you guys go forward. But in that, I would, I think, humbly ask to not even reference and to allow our community to actually be a part with everyone and kindly give suggestions and thoughts so that we can come to a conclusion together and move forward. So, thank you guys for listening tonight. Thanks for being here. I know you have a hard job, so I appreciate you guys listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis.
Hello.
Good evening.
First, I'll tell you, the mic is just for you two, so for us to hear you, you have to speak up.
Okay.
So, please state your name and your address.
All right. My name is Michael Knight. I live at 611 East Main Street, Stanley, Virginia, and I will be brief. First of all, I want to thank all of you for serving our community from one elected official to another. I know it takes a lot of your personal time, and sometimes it creates a lot of additional anxiety in your life. But I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate what you guys do. Secondly, I would like to thank you for helping us out in Stanley with the resource officer. But as elected officials, you know, we try to do what's best for our community. Not always what we want, but what is best for our community and what the people that elected us want. In saying that, my question is, do you work for the people or do you serve yourself? I know that in bigger decisions, I try to kind of step aside from myself and try to think what's best for the community or what the people want. Like, say, I'm not a great speaker, so one of the things, if this does in fact pass, my question would be, where do my rights end where someone else's begins? Do you represent the people? One suggestion that I would recommend is possibly an additional bathroom. To give you an example of a problem that may occur is, I mean, I've got young teenage and minor children, boys, and they're all boys, and they play tricks on one another and stuff. But I could see this being a problem or this happening. A young boy comes to school, says he's transgender, so he wants to go into the girls' bathroom or the girls' locker room while they're changing for phys ed or whatever. He's got a camera, so he's taking pictures, and the next thing you know, that's up on the internet. You know, I have grandchildren, and I really don't think that this is a good thing for them to be exposed to. There again, that's my opinion. And then lastly, I just want to say and ask again, do you represent the people or do you represent yourself? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Good evening.
Hi.
The mic is for the internet, so for us to hear you, we need to speak up.
Okay.
All right, and please state your name and your address.
Okay. My name is Bonnie Snyder, and I live at 312 Second Street in Luray. I'm talking against... I'm hoping that you all will reject the so-called guidelines that they are, that they put out from the Virginia Department of Education. And these so-called model and so-called guidelines are an impossible feat to implement. The gender dysphoric student or child is given full range to continue in their dysphoria and to challenge the authority of the teacher, the staff, and the administration. The student with gender dysphoria is the one that's in control and not the adult. These guidelines do nothing to help the child out of their troubled state. In fact, they enable them to go further down the path that they've already taken without requiring responsibility or accountability for their actions to themselves and to other people. The child is absolved of most of the accountability under these guidelines. This is a sloppy attempt at guidelines, and it is not worthy to have come from a department calling itself a Department of Education. This policy will bankrupt Page County school systems and destroy public education as we know it. This policy sets up for failure every county that accepts it. This policy puts the teacher behind the eight ball. And I was wondering, have you all taken any action to improve this disconnected and law-breaking model from the Virginia Department of Education? Well, I suggest that you reject it and aspire to work on a feasible plan for our county. You need to involve teachers, teachers who will be trying to do their best for the students in this county, but you must get their input anonymously because you are their bosses, and they cannot be honest with you about the failure of this system and the inability to implement it as long as they have to put their name to their statement. But you could do it anonymously. You have to... You are their employers, and you have to do this for the children in Page County. And you need to work up a guideline that is more conducive to our county standards and our county values. And I hope that you've got the guts to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. What I have to ask the board now is if you are in favor of reading into the record the public comment that came out of mine, or do you want them just to go into our minutes? I have two for the minutes.
I'd say read it.
Well, the papers are tied to fire and melt. It'll take time to read.
So am I going to pass my computer over for you to read?
Is all of them dealing with the masks?
No.
Let the child read.
I'm not reading the ones that's... You know, the ones that we can do something with. Can't do anything about the mask one, but for the rest of them, we should hear.
Okay. I highlighted those.
Thank you, Dr. Painter.
Lisa Brown, 222 Valley Crest Drive, Raleighville. I'd like to ask the school board to continue with YouTube videos of school board meetings going forward. Also, please continue to allow public comments via email. Perhaps the meetings could alternate between one or two consistent places so that the IT staff is not stretched thin. More citizens, parents, and employees are able to attend meetings this way and allows people to go back to the video and hear things for themselves if there is a question. Transparency and communication are very important. We have the technology to continue to do this, so please do. Stacy Struck, 114 Emmens Street. Page County School Board, there is no doubt the last year and a half has been a struggle for our educational system. We as parents, educators, and administrators failed our students. It would be naive to say it was just one person or persons that have caused the issues that we have had recently. We've been given a chance to get back to our proper roles in our school district. We need to let our educators teach, let our administrator focus on our children's education and curriculum, and let our parents do what they feel is best for their students. Need to take this opportunity at the start of the new school year to put the focus back on our students and the quality education they deserve. We can go through thousands of pages of studies about COVID. Take a step to allow each person to do what they feel is best for themselves and their families. When my child is sick, I do not expect anyone to come and care for her. She is my responsibility, and I care for her as I see fit. Being her parent means I am responsible for well-being. I do not expect your teachers bust over the cashier at Food Line to know what is best for my child. That is my job. Today, I am asking you to get back to doing your job. I'm asking that you put the focus back on students and not whether they're wearing a mask or not, but to focus on giving them the education they deserve. Give them back their freedom to be themselves, to grow in the classroom among their peers. Give them a chance to thrive again in the classroom. Give our educator the freedom to focus on their students, not trying to follow unnecessary guidelines put in place by people who do not know what it means to teach in a classroom. These guidelines are developed by politicians in offices nowhere near our local county. Politicians, they have no clue that my daughter became so anxious last year that she would break out in tears at even the mention of math class. They not know what is best for our students. We as their parents do know what our child needs. Please consider parents' rights and their knowledge of what is best for their students. Please do not shame those who choose not to wear a mask and don't criticize those who do. Please do not take away our ability to make that choice for ourselves and our children. Please do not undermine our ability to care for our family that we see as we see fit. We have options for people who choose not to abide by certain regulations because of religious reasons, but we cannot give those same freedoms to parents who just want to do what they feel is best for their child. There cannot be a double standard when it comes to our children and their right to a proper education. Then it finishes about mask. Mary Fedor, 5380 Page Valley Road. As a resident and grandparent, I'm quite concerned that schools are intruding on the rights and duties of parents to teach moral values. I believe the only value of school should be upholding and expecting from students, teachers, and administrators is teaching each other mutual respect. I am a product of Virginia schools, and that value is upheld. Our great history and historical figures should not be... I don't know what that word is. Of course, the contributions of people of color and women should be celebrated, but not at the expense of the contribution of our forefathers. We have made tremendous strides toward equality, not equity, in America, and we should be proud to celebrate it. Let's concentrate on bringing up math and reading and science, not dumbing down and confusing a generation that sees no color. And I just want to say that I am reading these things that are written, and things are misspelled, and I'm not fast enough to correct. Jennifer Cole Pharoah, 803 Denver Avenue, Shenandoah, Virginia. I'm praying that God would grant you wisdom this school year, and you make decisions that will help all children learn, be safe, and successful. Thank you. Pam Jenkins, 13 Kenan Street, Luray. In reference to gender, bathroom, etc., I'm a lifelong resident. Graduated from Page, now reside in Luray, and I'm now raising a bulldog. In 29 years of marriage, two things my husband and I are most proud of are our kids. In 2011, our daughter graduated from a private Christian school. Our son started two years after she graduated, 14 years between our kids. We decided to send him to public school. I was so scared and apprehensive about the decision, but we felt it was right for our son. Prior to kindergarten, I nervously met with Mrs. Day, who was a principal at the time of Springfield. She calmed all my fears and left that feeling, Day feeling, at peace. Affirmation from God, if you will, that we are making the right decision. All through my son's Springfield experience, the Lord continually reiterated to us that we had made the right decision. Zero regrets for choosing public school. Then we blinked, and it was time for middle school. Once again, protective mom mood, lump in my throat, I sent my son off to LMS. And once again, God gave me confidence over and over reassuring me that this was the right choice. Sixth grade was great, wonderful teachers. Seventh grade salary was a blur due to it shutting down, and then eighth this past year, when some were pulling their kids to go to other schools. Some chose to homeschool, and some chose remote learning. For us, we chose that if the doors were open, he would be there, and he wanted to be there. We trusted the staff at LMS to better educate our son than him being at home. It was lots of challenges, met with fantastic teachers, showing up with grace, understanding, professionalism in a very rough year. Again, the Lord saying to us, you did the right thing. My son has had amazing coaches and experiences throughout LMS and have not questioned one minute of sending my child to PCPS. It's a known fact that those in jobs who are passionate about performing their jobs much better. It's a consideration as well when assigned how to proceed with the bathroom and gender issues. We have some great teachers who are passionate about their jobs. When you force a narrative that is far removed from their belief system or put the extreme pressure on them to monitor and keep students even more safe than they already have to do, they're undoubtedly going to remove their passion, which in turn affects the students. Having given two children by birth that I will answer for, any child coming into my life or whatever means, I am responsible for their well-being and safety. Over my lifetime, through church youth programs, sports, friendships, etc., maybe I will be responsible for 100-plus kids. Whatever the number may be, my actions, my accountability with God, I will answer for how I've affected those I've been entrusted with. You by the very nature of where God has placed you right now on this board are responsible for thousands. God placed you here for a reason, and what does He want you to do? My son is about to embark on his first year at LHS. Huge milestone, big opportunities. I'm praying that through your help as a school board that the correct, fair, responsible decision will be made for all children so that yet again, in so many times over my son's years, I will feel the peace and affirmation from God that I made the right decision in choosing PCPS. Thank you for your consideration. Many prayers for y'all as you move forward, remembering a godly example is always the best example. Thank you, Pam Jenkins. Jordan Ko, 163 Lisa Lane, Shenandoah. Action item 7.04, Student Code of Conduct. Thank you for adding gender and gender identity to the sexual harassment section of the Student Code of Conduct. I did notice at the hate speech section of the Student Code that there is a glaring omission of hate speech examples for LGBTQIA+ student staff and parents. This tells me that the board as a whole... This tells me that the board as a whole is likely uninformed in this area and hope that further education from community experts will help correct this oversight. Dress code is also an issue that needs more clarification, as scanty is subjective and based on perceived morality of the person viewing the clothing. The same goes for students who might wear a shirt for Black Lives Matter or Pride, both of which are free expression. The attempts to degender the dress code, while admirable, still fall short. Action item 7.05, Opening of School Information. As the CDC is showing us in the high category and updated guidance from VDH stating masks should be worn for everyone, including vaccinated persons, it's my hope the school board will make the correct decision. I'm concerned about the number of excused absences that may be required for medical reasons, as some parents' guardians may need to hold their children home for physical or mental health-related medical conditions and its affect ADM. Alternatively, to alleviate some of those concerns, a remote slash virtual option should be wise, to have available rather than increasing the number of pupils who may need to exit home instruction and therefore also lowering ADM and thus funding across the board. For policy JEG, compulsory education requirements do not apply to children whose immunizations against communicable diseases have not been completed. This verbiage could be excluded, used to exclude any and all COVID unvaccinated persons from school grounds. While there are no easy answers why some people have economic concerns with their children needing the school day as a form of childcare so they can work, needs for medical leave are likely increased across all demographics in the schools with such prevalent Delta transmission, even amongst the vaccinated population. With schools opening on the 23rd, there is no other meeting to discuss this prior to opening unless a public hearing is called. The board would be well advised, considering weather for our location, reopening in person is even wise, even if that option is only available for the elementary level. As more middle and high schoolers become vaccinated, people will contract COVID at school, and they will take it home to the community, just as those who already do not masturbate from the community into the schools. The board would be encouraged to apply and implement such testing to assist with the implementation of JHCC communicable diseases and identify those persons who should be excluded from the learning environment. Willful refusal to use precautions to prevent spreading communicable diseases like COVID could also potentially be enforced with this or a combination of other policies considering asymptomatic or mild cases of COVID-19. Action item 7.07, VSP policies. Policy JHCL/GB still needs to be updated to be in compliance as the current verbiage stating "mother" and "her" excludes those with a gender identity other than "mother" and "her." A language change to...
Three minutes.
Cool. Thank you. Bonnie Snyder, she spoke.
Yes, she did.
Do I have to read that one?
Nope. She spoke.
Mary Fedor, 5380 Page Valley Road. Dear Page Valley County School Board, I'm opposed to allowing biological males to use the most intimate of spaces of modesty in a school, a girl's bathroom. Surely accommodations can be made for any transgender student without impinging on the majority of girls. I'm sure you not have to suffer this indignity. I'm also opposed to requiring everyone to change pronouns, just address everyone by their name as agreed on the first day, and get to educating before... I'm not saying that, because that's kind of racist. Toby Longenecker, U.S. Highway Business 340. The agenda is a little convoluted, but I'm fairly certain all my points are on the agenda. First, I want to start with saying I appreciate the opportunity to state my thoughts electronically. I like to express the importance to returning to school board meetings that are open to the public with similar COVID protocols, of course. The ability to be at the meetings over YouTube live is a great alternative into staying in place, but the opportunity to in person would be preferred. As a trans man, I just want to reiterate what I've said several times. Protecting all of our children means all of our children. There are plenty of studies that show the impact of validating a trans person's gender, especially in our youth, versus the alternative. Protecting all children means all children. Supporting trans youth is suicide prevention. What percentage of dead children is an acceptable amount before everyone considers it worthy of looking past ourselves? Statistically, most children would survive COVID. Statistically, your child likely isn't trans. Statistically, your family would be fine, so the risk of someone else's child is fine, right? Wrong. No child is worth risk that we not have to take. We the means protect all children easily. Let's set outside of our own echo chambers and try to protect everyone. Bethany Price, Leaksville Road. Dear Page County School Board members and Dr. Fox, at least one member of this board has voiced concern over streaming the meeting live and suggested people weren't paying attention, or meetings weren't held in person. I have to strongly disagree. Had anyone given time? While I've been watching the meetings, there have been anywhere from 40 to 75 people watching the video live. I'm not sure how working parents or parents of children involved in extracurricular activities could participate in these meetings otherwise. For the sake of transparency, I'd like to recommend the school board alternate the future meetings between the two high schools and also livestream on YouTube. Just allow people to participate personally either in the county, allow everyone that can't attend to be fully aware of the discussions taking place.
That conclude? Thank you, Dr. Painter. All right. People of June minutes, need a motion to approve the June minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the June minutes with them being amended as needed with corrections.
Have a motion, have a second?
Where are they?
They ran, I think, July's agenda.
Yeah, you have to go back to that one.
Okay.
So have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gubler. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes pending corrections. Yes.
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 I'm going to say no, because I haven't read them. And if there's corrections to be made, I don't know why we're approving it yet. So no.
I, I agree, because there are some mistakes, but to be fair with everybody on the board that have a chance to review them again after the corrections, it probably needs to come back again. So...
To table the next meeting?
Yeah, so...
Is that a friendly amendment?
Yeah. Mrs. Smead, do you amend your motion?
Yes. To table two. To table them at this point, and we will review them and approve or disapprove come the next meeting of this month.
August the 26th?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second? All in favor? So they will move to August the 26th?
So will they be, like, posted on there again when the corrections are made?
Yes. And go back to the July one?
Yeah, I just found...
There are a few that need to be... There's a few things.
Okay. They're on July 22nd.
Yeah. Okay. And to informational items, monthly financials, Ms. Seakers.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. You all have been provided with the monthly financial report for July, where the expenditures and revenue were $2,669,696.17. And up on the board, you've also been provided with the local match calculation that we did balance with the treasurer. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Any questions? Summer school update, Mr. Bitson?
Good evening, members of the board. Tonight, I've put a three-page stapled sheet at each of your seats that hopefully will help recap some of our efforts that we had for summer school this past year. I think it's fair for me to say and start off by saying our summer school program was a tremendous success, and we have quite a few things to celebrate as part of the steps we took. I would like to say a big thank you to the staff that participated with us for summer school and to the students who came out and also participated. We successfully completed five programs, and we're going to spend a little bit of time going through that here this evening hopefully. And we did provide transportation to and from for every student. At the elementary level, if you remember, we had two different programs going on. We had our summer enrichment program, where we had 18 students participate. And really, that's where we were focusing on some of those skills listed there, self-awareness, relationships, choices, and different things. An opportunity for students really to just come back together and start to form some friendships. The elementary summer bridge program is our more academic program, and we had a total of 140 students participate in that program. So I would say attendance was pretty good. That focused primarily on ELA and math remediation there. If you start to look at some of the different units or that were completed using Lexia and iRay, you total that up, Lexia, there were 566 units completed. So when students had an opportunity to get on the computers, you can see primarily they were using Lexia software. The comments on top of the second page is just some comments and feedbacks from the elementary program. I would say we began to welcome students back into the building, some of which hadn't been in the school during the school year, so that was nice. We always, as part of these programs, are looking to help with transition. So when you look at that second bullet there, you know, if you were an incoming kindergartner, this might have been your first chance to come in. And so we've already started to pave way for the upcoming school year, again focusing on relationships. And I think Mr. Hopkins would say the same thing I'm saying, very successful programs. At the middle school level, we continue to experience success. And so I'm going to give you some data that you probably, if you could do all the math, you can add up and find out, so I don't know if you want, if you're going to be taking notes. But just if you kind of summarize all of the different sessions, at Luray Middle School, we had three different sessions that occurred. Page County Middle School, we just had, we were able to take care of the students that needed to be there in just one session. But out of that work, we had 47 students that we were able to promote. Okay? So that meant they were going to be retained in the previous grade level, and they came to summer school and were eligible for promotion because of their efforts. We had another 35 students who were there and received remedial instruction. So as we talk about what we were looking out to accomplish, the learning loss, we had 35 that came just for remediation. And of the students that attended, we had 36 that had perfect attendance for the sessions. So attendance was there as well. If you look back and you start to think about some of the failure data that we had that we distributed at the end of the June meeting, I think if you total that up, we had approximately 70 students at the middle school level that had failed, of course. So, you know, the thought that 47 of 70 came, you're, you know, you're almost at 70% of students that we started to recapture as part of this program. So I think that's something to celebrate. If you break it down for each individual subject, in English, we were able to promote 33 students, math, 46 for promotion, and history, 32. So those were the individual subject areas that were the reason why students possibly were retained but were able to achieve the mastery that we were looking for. We've included comments, again, from each session, so you can kind of read through those and take a look at them at your leisure. But if I could, I'd like to just skip to the high school portion of what we did, starting with Luray High School. We had 65 credits that we recovered at Luray High School, so if we total those up, and because of our efforts there, we had two additional graduates from Luray High School. And our success also came at Page. We had 86 credits that were recovered and additional six graduates. So for our summer school efforts at the high school, we were able to allow eight more students to be part of our summer graduation services, which is really nice. So if you begin to think about some of the data that we shared at the end of the school year, we had 188 students that failed one or more classes, but we recovered 151 credits. So we had 151 there. So right again, you're at close to almost 80% because of these efforts that have hurt. So all things considered, I think that's definitely a success. A couple of notes that we just did, all of them included. We gave you as part of the high school data some SOL test data. So we did have seven students that passed the SOL because of coming to summer school, so you're kind of keeping track there. That would be seven additional verified credits. We did have students who took the SOL, and some of those students, although they didn't pass the SOL, they scored high enough that we would be able to award them a locally verified credit. So we call that a win as well. And we did not note that those as passes, but that's to the students in charge. At the bottom there, we did put a couple of other notes. We did offer PSY services for some of our SPED students, so you can see some of the data there. So I call that kind of our fifth program that we were able to offer. And then on the back, you get an idea from your information, a little bit of what it cost. We talked a little bit in our planning about what the budget was for our summer programs, and I think it's safe to say that we came in well below what we had planned, if I estimated those costs to be. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So no questions, just comments?
Sure.
And then maybe a question. First off, thanks. Thanks for everybody that was involved in this. This is great. We had our board meeting three or four weeks ago, I think, maybe two or three. And I think Gina, because I was pressing Dr. Fox, you know, we got to catch up, we got to get it done, you know? And she said, if anybody thinks it's not going to take us three years to recover from Laxtron, now we're masking kids again, and it might even have to shut it down if the virus keeps going up. We need to start planning budgets. Summer school is going to be a necessary thing, in my opinion, in the next five years, whether I'm on the board or not. So good work. Appreciate it. Thank you so much, and everybody that chipped in and everything's great things. Helping students, just wonderful.
Prior to this year's summer program, we had previously done a small amount of work, really particularly just at the high school level. Both the elementary and middle school programs had anything in recent years. So this was a major undertaking. Several of you participated in some of the planning meetings, and we were really pleased that our planning came through. As you know, Mr. Painter, the COVID funds that the school division had received, we do have additional years, and we hope, like Dr. Fox's, we've also discussed this, that we are planning summer programs for several years to come.
Yeah. It's a wise move.
Well, my question related to that is, with the June monies that you spent, why don't you recoup that through the SR3? Because it would fall under learning loss.
We are actually going to recoup that through the cares, but at the time in our program, it is recouped through the local funds. We are asking for reimbursement through the June payment.
We didn't want to put that down until...
Yeah. We have asked. It has not happened, so until then.
I have a question. On the elementary, the Lexia, that was a new program?
That was something that we had used during the school year.
Right. But this worked really well?
We were very pleased, just to be honest.
Okay. Because that was one that we purchased and didn't owe a whole lot, so it paid off.
We want to make sure we're using the things that we have purchased, so I wanted to try to demonstrate some data that there was what, you know, the number of units being completed.
But you're pleased with this program?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
I have a question, and it's not for tonight, because I don't expect you to have the answer tonight, but at some future date, won't even pinpoint the date for you, but can we look at what the graduation rate affected for this past year and what it looks like for the current seniors with the recovery of those past credits at the high school? So we sort of know if they're still staying on target to meet the graduation rate?
It's a good question.
So as part of you, just want to make sure I clarify your question, okay? We're going to try to give you a graduation rate for this past school year.
Yeah.
And for the upcoming senior class and classes below, the number of students that are what we would term at risk because they're not on track for press.
Correct.
Okay. Just to make sure I understand.
Yeah, what are the percentages? The numbers and then percentages of students there? Because we really need to keep the eye on the ball on that one. Because we really need to keep the eye on the ball on that one and make sure that we don't fall short for our students. Even given with what we've been through with COVID, we still need to keep the eye on the ball for that to make sure that they graduate on time and be able to go on to college as they had wanted or enter the workforce as they had wanted to do in a particular timeframe. So I'm not pinpointing the date, but at some future, soon, but some future one, that if you can get that back to the board.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Painter. Moving on to the next information item, therapeutic day treatment program. And before I even turn it over to Ms. Owens, I want to welcome Ms. Owens to central office into her new role. We look forward to many great things from you. So Ms. Owens, floor is yours.
This evening, I'd like to give you a list of our memorandum of understanding with National Hospital. We need to talk with the letters that will be spread around campus. It's been NTV, National Hospital of Medicine, to provide TET services in our buildings for the upcoming school year. This update was also presented to administrators and school counselors and hoping to get better for all classes starting of the school weekend. And that's something that will be new to us this year or last year. So of course, with COVID, we worry about TET services. So in helping with that, our hope is to start this, we grow off the floor of our buildings to use staff with a TET specialist. And as they grow their staff and we grow our referrals, we hope to anticipate that all of our buildings will have a TET specialist. And we can forward this partnership of the previous TET counselor and school counselor and the value of the work that they do on our buildings. And it's something that I'm looking forward to perpetuating. Any questions? Is there a question to me?
Any questions from the board members? Okay, were you able to pick her up? I guess what I thought.
Well, why don't we have people move to the mic if they're going to present?
Okay, there you go. So Ms. Owens, when you go back to your next one in the action item, if you can go to the podium, that way it's picked up for everybody sitting down. Okay. Moving on to the next information item, facilities, development, policy, FFA, school facility names. This is something that came to the board as a request of one of the board members. And it has to do about renaming a facility in our division. And you have before you the current policy that we have. And the addition that has been added is in red. Does everybody have that policy in front of them? Okay, it's up there.
Yeah.
And what it is, the only thing that changes is it still stays if the person is deceased for at least ten years or upon unanimous decision by the school board. So that's there for your review, because it's not as an action item this time, but it will come to an action item next time. And then, once that is done, it will come before the board to rename one of the facilities after a former employee. Any questions?
Thank you for the work.
Dr. Fox, you want to add anything to this?
No, sir.
Your name was there too. I didn't want to skip over here. All right, action items. Religious exemptions request, Ms. Linda Breed Wallace.
I have two. The first is for two students. Fourth group to pre-K. They've not worked everything as it should be.
We don't need it for pre-K.
I started saying, we don't need it for pre-K.
Right, because she's going ahead and doing it so that she doesn't have to come back next year.
It has to come annually, anyone.
No, religious exemption does not.
I thought they have to turn in their...
Religious exemption does not.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay.
The second one is for one student who is a kindergartner.
Religious exemption to attend school?
Yeah.
Okay. You're right, that's different from...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Do you have a motion to approve those religious exemptions requests?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve both of those.
First one is student A and B.
And the second one, student A, as presented.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Sir.
And Mr. Lansbury, seconds?
Mr. Gooper?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Dr. Painter?
Yes.
Mr. Lansbury?
Yes.
Mr. Breed?
Yes. And next item, claim for payment, Ms. Secret.
Good evening again, board. You all have been provided with the claim certification. For the total operating expenditures were six hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety cents. Food service expenditures were thirty thousand, fifty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. For total expenditures of six hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Along with that, you all have been given the list of claims as well as a check register. If you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Did Loray Elementary get a refund or a return or something if they're eleven dollars and forty-nine cents on the good?
Yes, so what happens there is sometimes, yeah, we get stuff back from vendors. Or it could have been that something was priced different from Amazon or something like that. Yes, it would have been a refund from a vendor.
Any other questions? Hey, do you have a motion to approve the claims for payment as presented?
I make a motion that we approve the claims as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Smoot.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Dr. Painter?
Yes.
Mr. Lansbury?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And purchase orders over ten thousand, Ms. Secret?
Yes, we have one purchase order over ten thousand for your approval this evening. It is for the outdoor furniture picnic tables that would be going to our middle school and high schools using the SR2 money that we have talked with you all previously about.
Are they one of the high schools or the middle school?
Middle school and high schools.
Middle and high.
Yes, sir.
What are those made of?
They are a metal table.
Kind of like polymer or something.
Yes.
I tracked the price.
Yes, sir.
Before we ask questions, we need to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase orders over ten thousand dollars as presented tonight.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Now we can ask questions.
We didn't ask questions on the last one either.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Secret, for those.
The question I have is that six, burgundy and six blue, so apparently it's, I mean, twelve and twelve. So it's twelve at each school. Six, because it's middle school and high school. So six for Loray Middle and Burgundy, six for Loray High School and Burgundy.
Equity.
And be the same thing for the Page Middle and Page High. Okay. Yeah, just in.
Are we putting the blue ones up at Loray and the burgundy up at Page?
That would be fun.
That would be interesting.
Yeah.
We'll mix it in.
You want to be...
Yeah. Mix it up, Dave.
That would be good outside.
Yeah. Okay, the next item is, oh, I'm sorry. Get out of order now.
Yes.
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 Mr. Lansbury?
Yes.
Mr. Gooper?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the next one. Approval for student code of conduct, Ms. Owens.
Good evening again, members of the board. I'd like to provide updates to our code of conduct and attendance. Most of the items you see on the list of changes are formatting updates, such as page numbers, changes to names and dates. Later, you'll hear from Dr. Fox and Mr. Bell about policy updates from BSBA. Some of those changes you'll see here are in anticipation of your approval of those updates. You'll also see that there are some asterisks around updates due to COVID. Dr. Fox is going to help me out with those modifications that are in the conduct handbook as well.
So if you all look in reference on page seven and page thirty, you'll see there's large sections there that were in the code of conduct last year related to COVID and attendance, learning, virtual learning, and remote learning. We left them for now, but they're going to be removed. I just wanted them to be there to let you know that they were once large sections that will be removed. So you wouldn't be alarmed if you saw large chunks being coming out, large chunks coming out of the code of conduct. At this point, because we're five days in person instruction, we're not going to include information like this in the code of conduct. If we unfortunately have to move to any other kind of instruction, we'll address those at that time through communications with parents and with administrators and teachers in the buildings. So what we're asking tonight is for you all to approve this with the knowledge that those sections will be removed completely, the two yellow sections on page seven and thirty, and then all of the other changes that are highlighted in the red line version for you. We're asking for approval for that tonight so that we can go forward, move forward, and have this prepared for students when they return on the twenty-third of August.
And we've all seen this individually, you guys, correct?
Yes, yes. This is the version that I sent to you all for review. So certainly, if you have any other questions about any portion of it, we'll be happy to answer that for you.
Well, let me make a motion. We have made a motion first, right?
Yeah.
So I make a motion that we approve the student code of conduct as presented by Mrs. Owens and what Dr. Fox has sent to us an email.
Second.
Motion second to approve the code of conduct with those changes in the highlighted version. Questions?
This has nothing to do transgender, right?
No.
Okay, good.
So I guess when we talk about the COVID stuff, you know, the governor's heavy-handed us and put down whatever he did today. So if parents send their kids with the expressed purpose of not wearing a mask, do we need to think about that? As far as conduct, how that works. Maybe it's already covered somewhere. But I think if you've noticed the response from the community, you're probably going to have some people that's going to push that.
May I respond?
Absolutely.
So I think, you know, first of all, our goal would be to talk with those families and those students. We have administrators, teachers who have well-founded relationships. And our goal would be to work with them to find out why is it that they don't want to wear? If there's, you know, some students break out and act mean, we can potentially find a mask or an alternative that wouldn't cause that to happen. Is there a solution to it? Because we don't necessarily want to push it to become a disciplinary issue where they're insubordinate. But it does fall under dress code. And in talking with the school division attorney, it could become a disciplinary matter if we so choose to move it in that direction.
Because I've had that question asked.
If we choose.
If, right.
I think I have faith and trust in our administrators that they can work with families and that we can come to a reasonable conclusion as to what the issue is about why we don't want to wear a mask. We want kids in our buildings for instruction. And so we need them there to recover. And if the mask is the issue that's going to stop them, we need to engage in conversations to find out how we can get them in.
And I will point out, as soon as I heard that today, because I work in another school division, I pulled it up. And there are actually, a lot of the comments that we didn't read had to do with medical reasons and things with the masks. But I actually found there's like seven exceptions to the order. I mean, it even specifies like PE classes. You're not going to have to wear them during PE because it specifically says, exceptions, individuals exercising.
So I have those exceptions listed for us to look at in the opening of school update for you in a few minutes. And so I think we could certainly engage. I think parents can reasonably, again, we can have conversations and we can look at the exemptions that already exist.
Yeah, because it says that they may request a reasonable accommodation.
Thank you for bringing that up. I trust you, Dr. Fox, that you're going to do that. It's a sore subject.
No, I understand. And I...
It's a sore for me.
I understand. What I would ask parents is to work with us, please. You know, be willing to come to the table, to have conversations with us, to find solutions that can work for their family and for us as a school division. Because we're in a position now where we're required to enforce it. Work with us. Just come to the table. That's all I can ask, is for everybody to be willing to have discussions about what we can do to accommodate.
Any other questions about the code of conduct? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the student code of conduct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Okay, on to the next item, opening of school information, operational impacts related to COVID-19, Dr. Fox.
And just so that you can hear me, what I have for you tonight is very similar to what I shared with you last month. However, I will share that it is an amended version based on today's announcement. If you could move to the next slide, please. Again, I'm just reiterating information from what I shared with you. We are conducting on an operational schedule that's five days a week with all students being present. And again, the asterisk there, recognizing that COVID could throw us a curveball and we will have to adjust accordingly. The next slide, you can skip right ahead. If you guys recall, we walked you through last time that there are five guiding decision points in the revised guidance from the Virginia Department of Health. The first one is to evaluate the level of community disease transmission. And this is the same chart that I showed you last month. Now you can just see the spike. And this is for the state of Virginia. This is not for Page County. The next slide, please. This is showing you Page County and where we are. And date-wise, you can sort of see a relationship that goes back to May where we were. And then the nice dip that we had earlier this summer that was making us all very, very optimistic. And then unfortunately, we find ourselves now with a bit of a rise. The next slide, this is that information that talks about how we can evaluate our community transmission with those two variables, about the number of cases per hundred thousand and then the percent positivity rate. If you go to the next slide. The Virginia Department of Health has changed their reporting a little bit, and they are now using the CDC guidance. So this is where they've directed us. And what you can see here is the spread of red now being where there is high transmission rates across the country. And if you'll go to the next slide, you see Virginia. And you'll see that Page County is in the red currently for the state of Virginia. So while we would take those two variables together, the CDC has combined them into this one graph. So right now, our spread of community transition is currently in the high level. The next slide shows you the cases per hundred thousand. And again, CDC has a little bit different way of reporting this information. We're currently at a level where they're reported at between a hundred and two hundred, which puts us in the high range as well. Anytime you get over one hundred, you're that one in the high. Our rate is actually one fifty point six. Thank you. And then this is the percent positivity where it's sitting at nine point four six, where last month we were sitting at three point seven percent. So again, just variables to give you a perspective on the community transmission rate. Step level two is to evaluate the local and school level vaccination rate. And I've put, again, for you, the same charts you saw last month. I gave you the dates. There's not a lot of change here. If you look at, say, for instance, your sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, last month we were at eighteen point eight percent. Currently, we're sitting at twenty-one point one percent. So we moved up, which is great. And you'll see right now, Page County vaccine-wise for the adult population, for fully vaccinated people, we're sitting at forty-four point seven percent. Step three is to look at the level of impact on the school. And this is, again, the same where we were last month. We don't have kids in the building yet, so we're at low levels in terms of that impact. So in September, we'll probably have a better way to measure that for you. So for now, it will remain at low. Step four, understanding your community. And we've chosen right now, the variable that we have is enrollment. And I just wanted to use this as, give you an opportunity on where we stand with enrollment. We're currently sitting at thirty-one sixty. Little bit of a drop from in July, about twenty-five students. But the good news is we are still above our budgeted ADM enrollment, which is good. That's where we need to be. That's where we need to be in terms of being able to move forward with finances. And then step five is the plan for the implemented layer prevention strategy. And this is where we're going to share the information that came out this afternoon from the state health commissioner. If you could go, thank you. And this was just ordered this afternoon, where all individuals aged two and older must wear a mask when indoors at public and private K-12 schools in order to inhibit the spread of the virus. Next slide, please. And here's this list of exceptions that we were talking about. So when students are at lunch or having a beverage, we hope they're not sleeping in school, we don't want that. When they're exercising or using exercise equipment, so that would be potentially at recess or in PE classes. When they're playing an instrument in band, we're going to do things like have the covers over the band instruments to help, we'll space them out as much as we can. Anyone obviously who's unconscious or incapacitated, anyone who's disabled or meets a risk criteria, or those assisting such a person, wearing a mask would inhibit communication or the receiving of services. So this would, in my eyes, this would cover someone who has a hearing disability and needs to read lips. And that, we've had a couple of parents who talked about that. We would make accommodations for that. And we either possibly can provide them with clear masks, or we can look at face shields, or we can look at base social, providing more physical distance or flexing back shields for them so that they can read those lips and be able to communicate. To participate in a religious ritual, or persons with health conditions or disabilities that would prohibit wearing a mask. We have, we being superintendents in the area, asked for clarifications on some of these because they are broad, and asked for specific examples of things that would qualify as exemptions. We were told that we could, if we need to, for health conditions, we could, if we wanted to, we can ask for medical documentation. The previous order that came from the governor explicitly said that if someone wanted to use a mask exemption for the medical documentation, you could not ask them for. This one doesn't explicitly say that, the way it's written, so we've asked for clarification on that. If someone claims that they cannot wear a mask for a medical reason, do we have the ability to ask for that? Our attorney has invited us prior to this coming out, that we could ask for medical documentation as a way to have an exemption for masking, but now we'll go back and have that conversation again now that this order has come out, and we've asked for clarification from the governor's office on what that means for that portion of it.
Well, may I ask a question? Looking at these exceptions here, you mean to tell me that the disease is going to stay back while you're eating and drinking and stuff?
No.
It's advanced back that don't bother you?
Yeah. No, we'll try to put other strategies in place like social distancing.
Yeah, but the stupid people in Richmond are saying that. That's what they're saying, and all it is is just like the lady said, the sheep.
Could you go to the next slide, please?
Mr. Benson has something.
Mr. Benson wants to ask something. And, you know, I know we don't want our students sleeping, but pre-K, pre-K students don't take naps in school, so, you know, we try to get the clarification.
And some middle of high school.
Right, but immediately it's a pre-K.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
So, you know, there are times when we're trying to clarify for our students and their families, when they nap at school, do they have a way to do that?
No, no, no apologies. Thank you for the clarification. We did ask also additional questions. We were previously told that any orders or mandates that came, if you had a pre-K school that was attached to your K-12 school, that the mandates applied. So in this case, the pre-K would be under the same order. There has been no change yet on the CDC's order for transportation in terms of buses. That stands, just like I shared with you last month. So when students are on the school buses or in cars or vans that transport them and staff, they would be required to wear a mask in that event. And then the other piece I wanted to share with you tonight, because we've already had a couple of incidences of COVID in schools and we've had to quarantine, we just wanted to give you a quick update on quarantining as where it stands today. So this is based on the most recent BDH guidance that's come out. So one of the key pieces that ties to the masking is this new exception that was put in at the end of, or middle of July, is that if two students are next to each other and they're within three to six feet, if one of those students is positive, the other student would be considered in close contact, but because they're wearing a mask, they would not have to quarantine.
Is there a time limit, only fifteen minutes?
Same, same fifteen minutes, over twenty-four hour period, yeah. So that's a, that's a plus, because it now means kids are going to stay in school. They're not going to be out of school for quarantine. These are the currently listed, the people who do not have to quarantine after a potential exposure, and exposure here is defined as somebody who is COVID positive. Anyone who's had COVID within the past three months, as long as they don't have new symptoms, and then are fully vaccinated, students or staff, as long as they don't have symptoms. However, the BDH does recommend that if you are vaccinated and you are exposed to someone, you should get tested in that three to five day window after exposure, and you should wear a mask for fourteen days within that exposure, just to protect yourself and to protect others, or until you get the negative test back within that fourteen day window.
What's the quarantine period for the folks up in the first bullet?
There is no quarantine period for the first bullet. If they're exposed to wearing a mask. That's the exception that the BDH just added. So if we're, for instance, we're
But if they weren't wearing a mask, I'm sorry.
Yes, if they aren't, then they would fall under the fourteen days.
Fourteen days is what I'm
Yeah, well, I'll go through that with you now.
Thank you.
There's a couple of options there. So the recommended quarantine period is fourteen days. That's BDH's language, they prefer that you do the full fourteen. If there are no symptoms, you can leave after ten days. And I will share with you that that's what we've done with a couple of situations that we've had. After the tenth day, if the student is non-symptomatic, we're having them assessed by either an athletic trainer or a nurse, and they can then return on the eleventh day. So we're trying to cut back if they're not symptomatic on that. If they have a negative PCR test on day five or seven, anywhere in there between the fifth and the seventh day, if that test is negative and they're non-symptomatic, they could come back on day seven. And we've talked about that as a possibility, because again, it would put kids back in school seven days sooner, that's a whole week. We just are concerned about the equity of that, because some parents are going to be able to immediately take their child to a location and have them tested. Other parents may not be able to do that. So we've had a conversation with some of the staff at Valley Health and, I'm sorry, tell me where Dr. Switzer is.
Valley.
Valley Health.
Yeah.
Sorry, Dr. Switzer.
Switzer.
Thank you, double apologies. We're going to work on that. We're going to figure out how we can make that more equitable. And then as we go through this, if we feel comfortable that what we're seeing in terms of students coming back and not being symptomatic, and it's not leading to additional quarantines, we can work to get to the seven days, so that we're getting kids another whole week back in school.
So I'm full, wholeheartedly in for that, whether we were masking or not. To save a kid seven days, that's huge. It's huge. Now, with the testing, whatever we do, it's got to be done by someone who knows what they're doing, because I know a family, they did their self-test, both had the same symptoms. One came back negative, and the husband came back positive. So we got to have somebody that really knows what they're doing. I can't take it myself, because I'm not going to stick anything up in my brain or wherever , however that test is working, so.
In my mind, we would, we would work with Valley Health, and it would be required to be done in a center that's certified for testing by a person who is prudential to do that. And it has to be the PCR test as well, it can't be a rapid test. So we would, I think, to me, that's part of the process, is to make sure that they aren't home tested or any of these quick rapid tests that are out of market.
And, and we need, we need to do that, because this thing, the variant that's come out, we just will look at this as though it's a flu, call it flu C, because it's going to change, it's going to want to survive. And we can't be here, sitting here next year, masking everybody up, no matter how many Democrats want it. We can't, we can't waste another year. That's just my encouragement to you. And I appreciate everything you've done. You've done a great job this whole week, different things going on, I'll mention that later.
Well, thank you for that. I think our goal is to do whatever we can to keep kids in the building. And we want kids in seats in front of teachers. And so if testing can help us do that and gain seven days back or three days back, we're willing to work through the processes to make that happen, and then look at the data to make sure it's safe and it's working for us as well, because I do think we have to do a little backend looking at it to make sure it's working and doing what it wants. The other option is some COVID testing options. One of the preventative strategies that are recommended by the BDH and the CDC is to do what's called screening testing, and that's sort of a random sampling of people just to see are people who are non-symptomatic, are they potentially COVID positive and being spreaders? So there's, there's a couple of options here. We can work with families to encourage them to use the local health department or area drug stores or the health providers to get tested if they think they've been exposed or they feel like they may be symptomatic. Or there is a program run through the BOE and the BDH. We have not had conversations here in Page County about it, but it's where we can do screening testing at schools. There's a pilot program that ran last spring. We can certainly talk about that. It is parental consent, I want to make that one hundred percent clear. It has to be parental consent. It's for students and staff, and it's just screening. Where a lot of school divisions are using it across the state is for athletics, so that they can try to catch that early, so that we don't have to quarantine whole teams. And we can, we can help keep kids also participating, because we know how valuable those experiences are for students. So if we want to have conversations about that, we would work internally to set that up. The pilot runs where our school nurses would be trained to do that, and either the school nurse, the parent, or the child, or the staff member can administer the test themselves. It is a rapid test. Within fifteen minutes, you get a result for them. So, and then we can make decisions with that. Student, recommend help them visiting their healthcare professional to get a full PCR test. So that's option on the table that could be considered outside of the testing that we would do for quarantined students already, to bring them back. So I just wanted to share that information with you tonight. And then just a reminder, these are the key preventative strategies, promoting the vaccinations, use of masks, physical distancing, screening, ventilation, hand washing and respiratory etiquette, the cleaning of the facilities. I really, really want to encourage parents and staff to remember number eight, that if you're not feeling well, regardless of whether you think it's COVID or not, because we don't want things like flu and stomach bugs, we don't want that in the schools, if you're not feeling well, please stay home. And certainly call your healthcare provider if you're concerned about your symptoms, whether they may be COVID-related or not. And then contact tracing and isolation, we're going to continue with all of that this year to try and catch it as quickly as we can, and again, help do whatever we can to get kids back in as quickly and safely as we can, or staff for that matter. So that is an update on where we are with mitigation strategies.
Well, I would just like to say thank you, because this really highlights a lot of the areas that have kind of been dark, and I think now there's a clearer explanation. And I just want to encourage families, ask questions if you have, and if you hear something, if you're not sure, call in and ask, and let's get the right information out there, and let's stay in tune, and we need everybody's help. We need to all work together on this as best we can. Some of the decisions we're given, they're not easy. I mean, we don't walk away from this table feeling, you know, like, okay, it's over, whatever. It's an everyday situation. We take it very seriously. And we could snap our fingers and make it go away, it would go, but that's not how it works. So communication, ask questions before you hear something, or if you hear something and you're not sure, let's get the right information.
Mr. Chairman, may I, one other comment. I don't know if we need to amend the agenda actually, because this was as an approval action item, because we were originally going to take a vote on masks.
That was going to be my question.
So I guess there is no action item related to this now?
It's information.
It was just information for you tonight. So do we need to amend the agenda to reflect that?
No, we just don't take action.
Okay, I was wondering about that, because we didn't have the discussion. I was already going on.
If we're not doing the mask thing, so what's, what's the action item here?
Right.
And there isn't one now.
So I just want to say something. I think the governor changed everything that was going to happen here, in my opinion. We were going to have a vote on masking, and I think it would have been optional, because we listened to the community. But this governor, who I have very little respect for right now, has superseded all of us, made us as though we are useless, that we cannot run our own lives, when this week I have seen pictures of a former president's birthday, no mask. I've seen our current president, a video taking his mask off and putting it in a fourteen-year-old kid's hand, telling him that's a souvenir. Now, I've never handed my mask. What kind of craziness is that? And you wonder why people don't trust it? It's because of that stuff. Congresswomen at a wedding, dancing around, no mask. One Congresswoman, she's sitting there with a bunch of about thirty-some kids, no mask, got it in her hand. As soon as the picture comes out, she puts the mask on, and then as soon as the picture's over with, she takes it off. So for some reason, these elites and us little peasants got two different roles. I hate to put it that way, but that's the way it is. And even in our closed session, folks, it was not the same as it is in front of these cameras. And Mr. Cooper, I like Mr. Cooper. I like him personally. He did everything wrong in a CDC recommendation on masks during our closed session.
I wore a mask.
You wore it, but you, you pulled it down below your nose.
To drink.
You put it on your ear.
We're not going to
You did all that stuff.
We're not doing this here.
So it's, it's a big, it's a big
We're not doing this.
It's a big
Nope.
production for the cameras.
No, I disagree.
Well, then you would act better.
Thank you. No personal stuff.
You know it's the truth.
No, it's not the truth.
It is the truth.
No, but this, I disagree.
Order. Are there any other questions on the opening of schools related to COVID for the superintendent? Hearing now will move on. We have the ESSER grant application. Dr. Fox?
Yes, so before you, this evening, you have a draft of the ESSER grant application, which is the American Rescue Plan. So this is the fourth or fifth series of funds that have been provided to school divisions, and this is intended to help to safely reopen and sustain the safe operations of schools. And what we've provided for you are some examples of the ways that we will, we have proposed to spend these funds. What will happen with this draft is that it will become a public document on our webpage, and we'll have a survey that's attached to it for the public, teachers, and staff to provide comment to us on recommendations that they feel we should make in addition to other things that they'd like to see potentially this money used for. So there's several categories of funding. One is prevention and mitigation strategies, and there you'll see in section two, we propose the purchasing of different personal protection equipment, such as masks, gloves, disposable gowns, face shields, counter shields, and other equipment like wipes and cleaning materials to clean and sanitize buildings and offices as needed. We are also proposing to use approximately three point six million of that funding to improve indoor air quality through modifying and replacing HVA system equipment. And this will include rooftop units, split systems, the wall units that are actually through the walls in some of our schools, heaters, gas units, and gyms at all four of our elementary schools, and we're going to be replacing a system at the tech center and in the auditorium of Page Middle School. In section three, there you'll see the different ways that we're proposing to use the funds to address unfinished learning. And there's a variety of different options that we put here in terms of things that we feel will have a direct impact on the work that's happening in schools with students. The first of which is to place some academic interventionists, one in each school, and I believe you all may have previously had a conversation about this, but that, those people will be placed in the buildings to support tier-two and tier-three instruction for students who need that kind of help. And what that would do is allow us to identify gaps that students may have in their learning, and then use additional staff to help mediate those gaps. We would also
Tommy, come on, man.
What? I based them one time.
Sorry.
You're hot if they love you.
We're on section three. Currently, those instructional coaches are 10- or 11-month contracts, and what we'd like to do is extend them to be 11 and so, just to provide additional support in our summer programs, either planning for those programs or being of direct support in those programs. We'd also like to use these funds to provide interventionists in our three schools that are currently under school improvement. So this would be a support position that's housed at the school level. This would be a person to gather, analyze, or disseminate data from a multitude of sources. They would also assist with any testing that may occur. They would assist with the implementation of EPSS, Power School, in terms of gathering and extracting data. And those three positions would be added at Page Middle School, Loray Elementary School, and Stanley Elementary School. And then additional funds would also be used to purchase reading and mathematics interventions to provide professional learning for the staff based on those interventions, and then various materials and supplies that may be needed. We've left this kind of open-ended intentionally because what we would like to do is use some data that we gather this fall semester to decide what additional interventions we might need. For instance, we had a discussion potentially about letters training, which works to help teachers at the K-5 level get a deeper knowledge of how literacy and language works. But we don't know if that's the right intervention. We want to use some data to make those decisions. So the money that's set aside would be probably used second semester to decide what to order, and then implemented in the following school year. Section four is a section where we can just outline any other use of funds that we might use. And here we've added in some technology, hardware, software, and some connectivity, providing replacement devices for students and teachers for our Chromebooks and our iPads, chargers for those devices, some upgrades to our servers, subscriptions to various computer software pieces that we use, and installation of fiber lines at high schools. Additionally, we'd also like to invest in some two-way radios that can be used to communicate in between schools and within our county emergency services. In a discussion I had this week with Mr. Woody Brown, we talked through this, and they've gotten a grant considerably. They've purchased a lot of these devices that'll go into our buses next summer, and it allows communication directly to emergency services within the county. What he'd like to see us do is potentially expand that so that the schools have direct communication. There'll be one or two devices in the schools now, but we'd like to expand that so that every administrator and potentially any teacher who might be outside with a class of students could also have access to that same level of communication. And that does fall under this ESSER requirements. And then section five is addressing students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs. And here we would like to work to fulfill a position, and this again will be at the school level, for family and community engagement liaisons. And these staff members would help assist with the mental health needs and interventions that families might need, which ultimately will support academic learning, social, emotional, and behavioral needs within the schools. They would also be another avenue for schools to connect with external and community resources that can be used to support families. And we would place one liaison at Stanley, one at Loray, and a shared liaison between Shenandoah and Springfield. And then the last intervention there would be evidence-based interventions that support student mental health and social, emotional learning. And I think the same thing there would apply. We would look at some data that we would gather in the fall semester to decide exactly what those interventions would be before moving forward with any of them. So we've given you a couple of examples. There are some things that would potentially qualify, but we are not committed to those. We would want to, again, look at data before we made any choices there. And the last two sections of this document are just how we're going to share this information, the input that we're getting. So again, we're going to publish this document on our webpage. We'll provide a survey where staff, teachers, anyone in PCPS and the community can provide input. And then we will take that input, we will revise the draft, and we will bring back the draft to you the 26th for approval. The only other thing I want to say is I'm sure the question is floating in your mind as a lot of staff members that are on this list to hire and put in schools. And we recognize that, but we also recognize the value of what those people could do once they're in schools. And we would just move through that in a pace where we would not deprive any classroom teacher, because potentially a lot of these positions could be teachers who wanted to move into interventionist or coach types of positions. But we would move cautiously and make sure that we have the staff in all of the positions before we would fill these positions. And the last thing about this grant is once we submit it in September, we can go back and make revisions to it along the way. So should there be a need that arises that we haven't thought of, or things change and we need to add or change something, we can certainly do that. We have the opportunity to revise it at any point. And I would just like to, with Mr. Benson or Ms. Seacrest, like to add anything to this.
Who's the team?
I was going to kind of volunteer, rocking him, since we're fully involved in the letters All elementary, or EL and Sped in middle and high, feel free to come over and see how it works.
Thank you, I like that because I think I've had some previous experience with it. It was very, very positive. It's a very, I would say, intense training, but it's very, very valuable training. But I would want our teachers to look at it and see.
I'm getting ready to do the pre-K training myself, so.
Yeah. Because what I do want our staff to assess is whether it'll integrate well with what we already have in place. I can't answer that question right now. We would need to look at that.
Yep.
Because we could have some other things like Horton-Gillingham that would potentially also fill a need, but this may take to another level to fill it.
Yep, I'll hook you up. My only thing connected to this is we might want to have Tricia update our webpage because you have to have your return to learn plan on there. And then once this is in the draft, this needs to be on there because there's a lot of old stuff.
Yeah, so let me explain that because I had a discussion with her about that, and I decided I just, we needed to wait till tonight to happen.
Uh-huh.
To have some decisions. And yes, we will. Part of this is we have our return to learn plan that we'll add in here now that we know sort of where we're going with everything and it's set. We'll update that, and it'll be included for public comment as well.
This is just for clarification because moving into the motion. One, on here you have in section seven, it says for the board on August 12th for review, and then on the 26th for action. So it's under action for tonight. What is the action that you are seeking for tonight?
I guess just approval of this draft so as to be able to post it for public comment.
So the motion needs to approve a draft, get posted.
Yes. And that you're in agreement, that you're comfortable with our plan to get public input?
Okay, so we need a motion for that.
I make a motion that we approve Dr. Fox's S03 spending plan for them to seek public input on the website.
Second.
Dr. Painter as the motion and Mr. Painter as the second. And I have a question. Under section four, you see the very last line, "PCPS will use approximately XYZ dollars."
So part of the draft that was given to us is they want us to clarify in each section how much money is going to be spent in that section, and then give a percentage of your overall fund. Right now, we're teasing out the exact costs of everything, so we will add in the exact amount, like section four of those other funds, what's the total of those funds, and what's the percentage of it. I just don't have those numbers tonight.
Okay, so that will be updated on the 26th.
It'll probably, it'll be updated before we post this, too, before the.
Okay.
Because I do want the public to see how much. The only one that is on here right now that I can confirm for you is in section three, we are required to spend 20% of our funds to address unfinished learning. So you'll see that 1.2 million over 20%. Now, how that breaks out with each of those different interventions, that's where we're teasing all those numbers.
Now, it says you have to use at least 20. Could you use more?
Yeah.
Okay.
Minimum of 20.
Okay.
And am I right, Dr. Fox, because you used to do this, too? That it is just a courtesy that she's having us approve it. You could sign it and submit it yourself. It's due September 1st, so she's actually being very courteous because she could just do what she wanted, and we have nothing to do with it.
Yeah, it's an administrative.
Yeah.
Decision, not a forward decision.
But I also do believe in getting input on where we're spending, because it is a large sum of money, and I want to be transparent with the community and with you all as to how we're spending that money.
And we appreciate that.
Yep. Well, she has to get public input.
Yes.
Not care about us.
Yeah. Okay. So do I, we have the motion and we have the second. Any other discussion? Questions? Okay.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Move into policy updates from the FBA. That was brought to us before. Now, you have those, do you have the breakout of what each one of those are?
So they were in the June, this was from June when these were first presented. And if you go back to the agenda in June, you'll see each one of these is there, and there's a red line version showing you the changes that are being made to each of them. This update that we posted that you see here is just a summary of each of those policies and just a quick synopsis of what the changes are. So if you wanted to just quickly see without leaping through every single policy as it's written. So you can see there the different changes that are being made. Now, you will see, like, for example, the very first one does reference State Code 22.1, 23.3. And if you all recall, that is the new State Code that listed the expectations from the state in terms of what should be referenced for the treatment of transgender students. And if you all recall, the discussion that we had with our attorney was that those eight elements that are listed in that State Code are currently covered under all of our policies as they are currently written. So where we were guided in the information that we have at this point is that all of those pieces of State Code 22.1-23.3 are currently in our policy in some way, shape, or form. So that's why you see the 22.1 is referenced there in it. And you'll see in your red line, you'll see that it's a new piece that's been added under each of those policy sections.
Now, I have a piece to add to that. PCPS has not formally adopted the model, the transgender model policy from VDOE, but stand behind our current policies as written as they protect and support all students. We find that our policies are significant. Goal is, our goal is to provide a safe and welcome environment to all students.
So the action item that's before you tonight is to approve these policy changes as they were presented in June. And we would move forward in then updating all of our policy on our webpages to reflect the changes that were presented in June.
And it does not say that we follow the VDOE transgender model policies at all. They may have that code reference, but it does not say that we are following VDOE transgender model policies. What we are saying.
And there's nothing in here that we're doing critical race theory.
No. So what we're saying is we have significant policy already in place. Some of these are replacing the ones that we already have and have had for many years. And we have practices and procedures already in place for the families of transgender students that we will still move forward with, and school administration will meet with those individual students and families.
Yeah, I think we've mentioned this.
We have. We put out a letter.
But people continue to think differently.
Yeah.
It's simply not true, but we're going to respect people.
Yes. The letter has been put out about the bathroom, not the co-ed. So that's already been out there. I've referred many to people back to that letter. Came out at the end of July. So that is out on our website. It was pushed out on social, on our app as well. So we may need to put that in a more reticent place that people can click on, on the website so it can be easily found and referenced.
I think that would be good. And, you know, I just encourage all the parents, I know it's a hot-button topic, and it's another thing that gets pushed down to us. You know, what you say at the kitchen table, and in just any general response with your children, are going to reflect how they feel. And we, and people have a free will, most times. We have a free will to do as we wish, and we just get to be respectful of all students. I know you guys are doing it. Just asking the parents to start making that a nemesis with the children.
Any other questions, discussions, debate? Okay.
Can we just have, I mean, besides this, in one of the public comments that I read, they referenced another place that wasn't gender neutral in the policy. Maybe we do like a find on all terms, like mother, things like that, and replace them with.
Yeah, thank you for your interest. Thank you for bringing it in. There's a number of things that we need to change in policy. There's some names that need to be updated, and that was going to be one of the things that we need to do is.
Because it looked like we tried to do this on these to make everything neutral, so.
Yeah, so what the FBA did was any policies that were up in June, they automatically made them neutral.
Gotcha.
So what we'll do is go through, and any other policy that wasn't updated in June, we'll make those changes and bring them to you for approval. But I would say, please be patient with us because there's a lot of policy. And we'll move as quickly as we can to make them and bring them to you in pieces. And there's other, there's other things that we need to update in some of our policy anyway. So we're going to look at a way to feasibly review those in a quick way, but in an appropriate way so that we can get all of our policies up to date as they need to be.
So let's call the question for, do I have a motion for approving the FBA policy updates as presented?
Make a motion that we approve the policy updates from the FBA.
Okay. I have a motion from, this is moved, I have a second.
Second.
A second from Dr. Painter. Now, any other further discussion, questions, debate?
Just clarification that this is going by what we already have.
And we are not welcoming people to cross bathrooms.
Right.
No.
Right.
What has been is it, it will be.
Yes.
So.
Says FBA, but it's what we already have in place.
And this is in line with what you've done in past, usually every June you get this big policy bundle from FBA.
Well, it's just the media has highlighted this, so.
And given the fact that these policies have been there for years, and it's just going through a review and a revision, because one of the State Codes that go along with nondiscrimination happens to be with one of the transgender. Yes, it's a code update. That's what it's doing, is updating the code. Does not mean that we follow VDOE. Nowhere in that does it say that we follow, and our FBA policy doesn't say that we have to follow that. So that's not what we're adopting tonight, so.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Dr. Painter?
Yes.
Is one there?
Yes.
No. Yes.
Yes. Moving into the next one is policy regulation, public participation in school board meetings, BDDH-R. Moving into the next one is policy regulation, public participation in school board meetings, BDDH-R.
So this is a draft of, or excuse me, yeah, a draft of the regulation to accompany the policy for public presentation at school board meetings. Again, you have a red line version that shows the changes that are proposed to this. And what you're doing here is just providing some clarification on the expectations and how people can sign up to speak and provide written comments to you all as a board. So this is up for your approval tonight. And again, it is a regulation that's accompanying policy.
It is not clear on here if the written comments will be read aloud. It just says that they'll be presented to us with eight copies. So are we just going to read those ourselves or are they going to be read aloud?
That's something that we would need to discuss and then add.
I believe this, it's a little bit confusing, but I believe that section, you're talking about the written comments towards the end. I believe that's if a citizen wants to provide any documentation to any comments they make. So for instance, there was a petition that was brought tonight. What you're asking the public to do is if they want to share any literature or provide a petition, that they give you eight copies, one for the board clerk and one for you all to read. So I don't think it references, now we need to clarify that to make it clear we can do that.
But does it, does it say anywhere about if they want to submit a comment to be read aloud? See, that's why I hope that's what the written comments were.
No, I don't see that reference in here.
Because if so, I would like to have a word limit to 450 words, which is the equivalent of three minutes, according to Google.
But do we have a way of counting those words?
I can highlight it and click word count and stop there because the one tonight was 1,200.
Yeah. That makes sense.
So do you want that to be a separate piece? Or do you want us to clarify this written comments section as it's written and maybe tease that out a little bit more?
I mean, do we always want the written ones read aloud? Or does it just want to be shared with us to read on here? So, I mean, it's up to you all. I really don't mind to read them, but I do prefer if they're not. 11 single spaced pages.
You put a word limit on it, then it makes sense.
And it makes it equivalent if they were sending it to podium.
Yeah. I'm fine reading them if it's a 450-word limit.
450?
Yes. Limit.
Limit, limited to 450 words.
So my question to the board is, do you want to see that change in that wording before we vote on it? Or do we want to vote on it as it is with anticipation of that added? Or vote on it and see how it goes by the vote?
I think we can.
Why don't we just put it in there as part of-
Let's just vote on it with the addition of written comments or written submitted comments are limited to 450 words. You could use that written comments part and take out that eight copies part and just say that they're, because it says through the written public comment submission form. And you could say that they're limited to 450 words. But up there on the signing up to speak, you could add something saying if you have supplemental papers to give the board, you need eight copies.
If that works.
I trust your all's wording.
Okay, so any other questions or concerns? Okay, I need someone to make a motion to approve public participation in school board meetings, BDDH-R regulation with the amended corrections.
I make a motion that we approve the public presentation at school board meetings, policy BDDH-R with the amendments that we just made.
Second.
Dr. Painter with the motion and Mr. Painter with the second.
Yes.
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 I'd like to add, though, I do like reading the comments and I'm glad that people want to participate that way. But when you are limited to a certain amount, you'll get your point across instead of everybody taking bathroom breaks or something while I'm reading forever and ever. It just makes people be more succinct in their message and more likely to listen.
Well, it makes it equal to those who-
Come in person as well.
Yep. And then we're not precluding them from coming if they still want to speak because they may have a sick child at home and they can't come. So this gives them a way to still get their thoughts and opinions out to us when they can't be here in person.
Yeah, because admittedly, sometimes people write something that I didn't think of, so.
Yeah, they're appreciative. Okay, on to school board norms and procedures. These are the ones that we did with our VSPA training. So call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the policy updates. No, 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 I'm sorry, for the school board norms and procedures.
Second.
Have Ms. Jackie Sullivan Smoot with the motion and Mr. Painter as the second. Any discussion, questions?
If we break it, are we going to ground each other?
Clarence, actually, there's a section that we did not get to in our meeting that does reference if we violate on first, second, and third offense, what the board would like us-
And we'll complete that with our second piece of the training.
In August. Gotcha, gotcha.
So we sit that as a group as well and then we'll bring that back in as a piece to the- Any other questions? Okay.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, on to school board meeting locations. We had this as an information item the last time. It's coming back for an action. The last time we discussed, we came to the conclusion of moving the school board meeting to the two high schools, Page County and Luray High. So do we have a motion for that? Can you detail that a little bit more?
We were partially.
Because before it would be like one meeting would be here and the second one would be somewhere else. Wasn't like that?
Yeah, it was, yeah. We alternated between here-
Yeah, first meeting here, second meeting out. So is it like that again?
That's why it alternates.
So it's whatever your pleasure is before we make the motion. So do we want to do, do we want to be here at any of them in a month? Or do we want to be out of the schools for all of them?
Fifty-fifty.
So one here, one at the school.
Let's start out that way and then-
What was it before, Linda? Was the first one or second one here?
First one was at the building, second one was here.
Okay. Because the second one is more of the, sorry Patty, the more boring financial stuff, right? Okay. Oh. I'll leave people alone.
So it could be first one out, second one-
Okay.
So it's the board's pleasure. Back to what it was at one time, first one out, second one here. And it keeps rotating from the first one. If we say Page County High School was the first one, then-
The second one's Luray, right?
But that will throw us off for next week, next time. That would put us back here because this is the first one in the month.
Starting September.
Okay.
I make a motion that starting in September, we have our first meeting of each month at one of our high schools.
Starting when?
Page County High School. And our second meeting in the month, here, beginning in September of 2021.
September the ninth, right?
That's at Page County High School.
Yep. So September will be at Page, October at Luray.
November Page.
Well, then we get into a single month, meeting month.
Well, it's okay, it'd be what it is.
Yeah.
Whichever's out is out.
So the single months, does it default to here or to a high school?
Single month, if the first meeting is at the high schools, then it's not, we're not going to miss any meetings that way, right? The second meeting is the one we always miss.
Yes.
So it's going to be fair.
Yeah.
So it'll be the first week, Mr. Goobler, or the first meeting would be at the high schools, second one would be here of the month.
But we're talking about the November one and December, so it'll still be the first.
Still be the first.
It'll be at a school.
Be at a school.
It'll be at a school.
Let's just remind each other.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have the motion from Dr. Painter and a second from Mr. Painter that we have the first meeting of the month at a high school with the first one beginning in September at Page County High School and then alternating after that.
I have a just, you know, bring up one please. We are likely going to have to purchase some additional equipment to do that, to be able to live stream it because I'm understanding your preference is still to continue. I know it's the next year. But, so we'll have to purchase some equipment to do that in both of those auditoriums to make that happen. What I don't know is how long it will take us to order that and get that equipment. So there's a potential we may not be ready for the first meeting in September.
Well, can we record it and post it till we get that?
We can record it and post it, but I'm sure we can record it.
I would just ask, what, where are you going to be in the school, in there, auditorium or office?
Auditorium.
What sort of format are you, are you going to have the table shaped like this or what kind of format are we in? I think this shape is good because it allows you to hear better, but it won't-
You're in front of a stage.
On that stage?
You cannot be on the stage.
It's under the stage.
Oh, it's under the stage, yeah.
You're on the floor? Why can't you be on the stage? We'll have to look that up because other school divisions, Chiner County being one of them, they set up higher than the audience, so.
Yeah, it's looking to me that's right.
Yeah, that's right. You're right, Mr. Goobler. It doesn't mean that it's right. So we'll just have to research that to find that out for sure because we want to be in line with what we do, so.
Are we going to broadcast or?
That's our next discussion. We're just talking about locations, right? Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Goobler?
Yes.
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 Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, on with the next one, approval of school board meeting virtually. Now, this is two parts. This is one if we're still doing it with YouTube and also keeping the online comments virtually. So there's two components to the virtual piece. So we need a motion if we're going to-
What do you mean online comments?
The ones that you read.
Oh.
If you're going to continue doing the phone. Or are we going to go back to what it was before you have the meeting? You have no YouTube and you have no online comment. They have to come in person.
I think you get better information now if people are able to watch it because then it's not hearsay.
We have to do the motion first. So we need a motion to-
I make a motion that we continue providing the community with live or recording of our school board meetings.
And online comment?
And online submission of comments.
So we have a motion from Dr. Painter. Do you have a second? And we have Mr. Lansbury as a second, that we continue with our current setup of YouTube and online comment submission.
I said live or recording.
Live or recording.
Until they have equipment.
Yes, because that could limit us, so. So now, any other discussion? Questions, maybe for? Or for the superintendent? No questions? Okay.
It's Solomon's day.
Oh!
We're going in a different order. She's calling you now. I know.
Yes.
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 Yes. Check and see if you're awake. Okay, motion passes. All right, last agenda item is board members' discussion time.
All right, so you got to own up to what you do wrong. And I accuse Mr. Goobler in a personal way. Mr. Goobler, I apologize for that. I didn't mean it to be that way. But my point in that, separate from that, is that having a mask and doing it for the CDC is a very difficult thing to do. It's almost impossible to do, actually. You have to be squirting your hands, I don't know how many times, every time you touch it. And we don't have squirt bottles around for every student. So my apologies, Mr. Goobler, for, if you felt like I attacked you and I understand that totally, it's my, I'm wrong. I was, I shouldn't have done that. Uh, Dr. Fox, I think you're doing a great job. I know that this mask issue was probably a lot of anxiety for you and I probably caused some of that and I probably will continue to cause it because I like to get to the truth. I like to get to, we're freedom, we have freedom again, get to the truth of things. And that's why I'm going to push tests like I wanted to do it last year, you know? Parents may not like that. They can blame me for that, but I think it's a good way of doing it. That way we know stuff. You've, I think you've kind of read our board pretty good. You had things for us to consider and everything changed this afternoon with the governor's heated. I just want to clarify, when people talk about state funding, and Mrs. Seagres, maybe you can help me with that. How much state funding do we give from the state every year?
It's over 68% of our budget.
Okay, so 68% is, it's more than we have in reserves in the county, right?
Much more.
Okay, so when people, when parents talk about, forget what they say, let them take our funding. We won't have schools open. That's very, now, vote different. You don't like the way it's going, you vote them out. He's going to be leaving and we got to do people coming. You don't like it, you vote them out, but this is what it is.
I thought you were talking about us.
Vote us out too. Uh, I think it, I think it goes to, we do work for the community. We're representatives of our districts in the community. I think we have a challenging year coming up. Mr. Bale's done a great job. We've got all kinds of transitions going around. He's hiring people best he can. It's going to be a difficult year and I just, I feel for our students. A lot to catch up on, teachers as well. And people need to support them as much as you can. I understand negative comments. You don't like the way things go. I don't like the way things go either. But you got to be supportive as best you can. And I appreciate you and the things that you've been able to do so far and how you've responded. Done a great job. Hope it continues. I think it will.
I have a great team helping you.
I think you do, yes.
Any other board member?
Yes, I have two things. I don't know if you, any of you have written by- I don't know if you, any of you have ridden by Shandau Elementary since first part of July until, you know, now. And if you have, you probably noticed that the wall that surrounds the school is no longer brown dark and all peeling away and everything. And I have a letter here from Mayor Lucas thanking the Page County School Board. The councilman, I would like to tell you, we are pleased with the, I'm thinking about the specs on it. Restoration work on the retaining wall at Shandau Elementary. The power washing and patching of the retaining wall have made great enhancements to our community and we appreciate your investment in the town of Shandau. Again, we appreciate your effort to enhance the community's surroundings and in the town. The town wasn't aware of this, but the cleaning of the wall, the money was donated by the Shandau High School Alumni Association. And the estimate that was given turned out to be less than what it was once expected. And then Mr. Williams, Larry Weekly, who is a native of Page County, graduated from Page and he's a stonemason of many generations, he is the one who did the paving or the repair. And I haven't been able to find the history on the wall. I have a picture in the book that Ralph Harlow put together on the history of the school. In 1918, it shows the school with no wall. There's another picture in 1928 that shows the wall. So somewhere during that timeframe, the wall was put up, but I don't have, couldn't find any information, who, where, when, whatever. But it is extremely a beautiful job done on both things. So thanks to the Shandau High School Alumni Association, I would like for the board to write a letter to them. Bruce Short is the acting president, but bless his heart, he's recovering. But if you want to send the letter to me, I will get it to, I'm not sure who's, you know, taking, stepping up to take his place right now, but I will make sure that the secretary gets that and will have it on file. So.
He signed it, let's, oh, that's from the town.
Yeah, that's from the town. The other thing, and I'm really excited about this, Sunday afternoon at 3 o'clock at the Shandau Rugby Baseball Park, Junior Avenue. We are, the town is going to recognize T R Williams. And on Monday, August 16th, Shandau will declare it T R Williams Day. On Sunday, they're going to present him with the plaque for everything that he's accomplished and what he's been through and, and it's going to be done because he's leaving to go to Virginia Tech next Wednesday. So if you have some free time on Sunday afternoon, drive on out. The town's done a good job getting information out and so forth and there's going to be at least one more and I won't say anymore because I don't know the dates or anything, but I'll bring that information back with you. But I'm just really tickled that the town is, we need to recognize our young people. And I'm hoping that that's going to start being a practice and we need to recognize anyone that's doing something really outstanding, but especially our young people because they are our future. So, and I think they did send the school system, you know, the same information for that, so that's all that I have.
Any one else?
I've got some comments. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Painter, for the comments, I appreciate that. We all need to get along and do good work. Unrelated note, if you're a parent and you're on the fence about getting your student athlete vaccinated, consider the benefit of having your child not have to quarantine for 10 to 14 days if they're exposed to someone with COVID in a team setting. So that's a big incentive, so think about that with your children.
And I just want to add that I went to the summer graduation for our Luray High School and Page County graduates and it wasn't very long or anything, but you could, it was worth it to me to see these, it just happened to be all guys that night. That you could just see how proud they were of themselves and their parents and it was just really fun to watch because they put forth the extra effort this summer to get their diploma. So I'm glad that I, I took that evening to go.
Okay, I want to echo Painter's statement with Dr. Fox. She's now been with us just a little over a month and, in my opinion, has done an outstanding job with trying to not only meet with some public community members, also meeting with her staff, also trying to deal with all the information changes with the masks and, and dealing with some of the issues that she's had to step in as her, as her role as superintendent and she's handled them quite well. She's not been rattled because I'm sure she's, she's gotten a lot of feedback from a lot of people. And then handling the six of us with some of our questions and concerns and, and stuff. And I think you've done an outstanding job on that. I think you have a great team behind you that's helping you with putting everything together and, and making things successful. And at least, I can speak for the board on this, I think we all appreciate that and, and continue with the good work and doing great things. I just want to make one comment. I just hope that we can soon get back to what we're really here for and that's the education of students. So now that we've put some things to bed, we can move on with education and we actually can start making a difference in our students' lives. So I'm really hoping that that's, that's going to change our focus and we can get a lot more done. Mr. Benson?
School board members, on this past Monday, we welcomed 33 new teachers to Page County. We spent an entire day with them and it was very well received by those that attended and we did hand out some gifts to our new teachers and we provided you a sample of that here this evening, so we would encourage you to take that with you.
Thank you. And I understand it's an apple and caramel, correct?
Correct.
Someone knows the weight of my heart. Thank you for whoever provided that for us. Ms. Pettit, thank you, Ms. Pettit. I'll come back, I'll come back, Benson. I need more caramel. Okay. Anything else from the board? Okay. I need a motion for adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Painter to adjourn and a second from Ms. Jackie Southern Foo.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
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 Yes.